Followed by the invocation.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Heavenly Father, we come before you saying, Lord, thank you for another day that we've never seen before. We ask for grace and mercy, Lord, and we ask that you give us understanding where there may not be understanding. We ask for peace all over the nation with all the hurricanes and all the flooding, Lord. We ask that you give them strength and understanding and so that the necessary things can be done and all these tremendous efforts can be resolved as quickly as possible. We ask for peace and understanding in our presence in the White House. And we ask for the NFL players to come together and ask for what's necessary to move forward as it relates to the flag of the United States of America. We ask for peace, Lord, peace and understanding. We ask for all these blessings in your son Jesus' name we pray, amen.
Clerk Golick roll call vote please.
Markovitch here.
Spitali.
Here.
Kalwinski.
Here.
Torres.
Here.
Higgs.
Here.
Emerson.
Here.
Warple.
Here.
Raikos.
Here.
Vanez.
Here. Let the record reflect nine present, zero absent. Moving on to reading of the minutes.
Madam President.
Yes, Councilman Spitali.
Make the motion to accept the minutes from September 11th, 2017.
Got it.
Motion by Councilman Spitali, second by Councilman Emerson, to accept the meetings of September, uh, the minutes of the September 11th, 2017 meeting. Uh, any discussion? Any discussion? Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries, uh, minutes from September 11th are accepted. Moving on to approval of claims.
Madam Chairlady.
Yes, Councilman Markovitch.
Move for approval of claims from September 6th through September 20th, 2017 for council meeting September 25th, 2017. Beginning with claims dated 9/12/17 and ending with claims dated 9/20/17. Claim number 5378 through claim number 5777 for thirteen million, four hundred and eighty-two thousand, nine hundred and nine dollars and eighty-six cents, I so move.
Second.
Motion by Councilman Markovitch, second by Councilman Higgs, for approval of claims from September 6th through September 20th, 2017. Any discussion? Any discussion? Any discussion? Clerk Golick roll call vote please.
Markovitch, yes. Spitali.
Yes.
Kalwinski.
Yes.
Torres.
Yes.
Higgs.
Yes.
Emerson.
Yes.
Warple.
Yes.
Raikos.
Yes.
Vanez.
Yes. Claims pass, nine in favor, zero opposed. Moving on to public hearings. Uh, public hearings is now open for anyone wishing to speak on ordinance number seventeen twenty-one. The, uh, 2018 Hammond Civil City Budget sponsored by Councilman Spitali. Uh, ordinance number seventeen twenty-four, the Hammond Redevelopment Budget Proposal sponsored by Councilman Spitali. And, uh, seventeen twenty-five, the 2018 Hammond Sanitary District Budget Proposal sponsored by Councilwoman Vanez, uh, Councilman Markovitch and Councilman Spitali. Uh, if you would like to speak to any of these ordinances, please approach the podium. Anyone wishing to speak on ordinance number seventeen twenty-one, seventeen twenty-four or seventeen twenty-five, please approach the podium. Thank you, public hearings is now closed. Moving on to communications. Any communications? Any communications?
Madam President.
Yes, Councilman Raikos.
Yes, just to announce, uh, October 14th will be the second Hessville cleanup of the year. We will meet at 9:00 AM at Freddie's Steakhouse Parking Lot, it goes nine to one.
And when is that?
It'll be on October 14th, Saturday, October 14th.
Thank you. Any other communications?
Madam President.
Yes, Councilman Higgs.
September 27th, uh, from 6:00 to 8:00 PM in Oliver B. Morton High School, Door B, location in the Cafeteria, address 6915 Grand Avenue. The school city of Hammond will be having a meeting as it relates to the referendum for the new school, uh, Hammond High School and the referendum that's going to be placed on the ballot in November for the voters of Hammond.
Any other communication?
Madam Chairlady.
Yes, Councilman Markovitch.
In, as an add-on, um, I attended the one at Clark and it seems like these meetings aren't too well-publicized because there wasn't really hardly any people at the one Clark High School. Mostly was just teachers and administrators. So, the one at Morton on September 27th, like Councilman Higgs said, I mean, encourage people to go there and see what's going on as far as, uh, about the new school and increases and what's going on.
Thank you, any other communications?
Madam President.
Yes, Councilman.
Build a better future in a four-year degree is not your plans, this career fair is for you. Saturday, September 30th, 2017, from 1:00 to 3:00 at the Hammond Public Library, 564 State Street, 219-931-5100. WWW.HAMMONDILBIN.us is the website. And some of the sponsors that's going to be there is First Midwest Banks, Business Systems, McShang Business Products and Solutions, People's Bank, Second District Councilman Pete Torres, DST Security Systems LLC.
Thank you, any other communications? Any other communications? Uh, I do have one. Uh, this is the Prom Genie is sponsoring a free parent-student college readiness fair. It is on Saturday, October 21st, from 9:00 AM to 1:00 PM at the Ophelia Steen Center. It's open to all students in grades eight through 12. Thank you. Any other communications? Any other communications? Any other communications? Communications is now closed. Moving on to committee reports. Uh, there were no committees that met this evening, but I would like to announce the upcoming community and crime watch meetings on Wednesday, October 4th. Edison Community Watch will meet at Edison School, that is at 6:30 PM. Uh, on Tuesday, October 3rd, Harrison Crime Watch will meet at the VFW across the street from Harrison Park, that is at 6:30 PM. And actually, Dr. Watkins is going to be, uh, the guest speaker there that evening. Irving Community Watch will meet Friday, October 6th, 9:15 AM at Irving School. Uh, Pulaski Park Neighborhood Association will meet Tuesday, September 26th, at the American Legion on Goslin at 6:30 PM. Uh, I urge everyone to attend a community or crime watch meeting in your neighborhood. Uh, you will find out information that is, uh, not generally known. Uh, you can talk to your police officers, uh, you can talk to the guest speakers who show up at the meetings and, uh, you may be able to find out something interesting in addition to, uh, preserving the quality of life in your neighborhood. Because community is not just about me, it's about us. Committee reports is now closed. Moving on to ordinance, third and final passage, there are none. Introduction of ordinances.
Item A, ordinance seventeen dash twenty-one. The City of Hammond 2018 Budget Proposal sponsored by Councilman Spitali.
Madam President.
Yes, Councilman Spitali.
Go through first and second reading, refer to the Finance Committee with the meeting set for Sep- October 2nd at 4:00.
Second.
Motion by Councilman Spitali, second by Councilman Higgs, for first and second reading of seventeen twenty-one with a Finance Committee meeting on Monday, October 2nd at 4:00 PM. Any discussion? Any discussion? Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Item B, ordinance seventeen dash twenty-two sponsored by Councilman Warple. An ordinance fixing the salaries and wages of all city officials and employees of the City of Hammond, Indiana, other than those fixed by statute or by ordinance, heretofore enacted and fixing the effective date thereof.
Madam President.
Yes, Councilman Warple.
Move for first and second reading, um, with a Finance Committee hearing on October 2nd at 4:00 PM.
Second.
Motion by Councilman Warple, uh, second by Councilman Higgs, for first and second reading of seventeen twenty-two with the Finance Committee, uh, meeting on Monday, October 2nd at 4:00 PM. Any discussion? Any discussion? Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Item C, ordinance seventeen dash twenty-three sponsored by Councilman Warple. An ordinance fixing the salaries and wages of all policemen and firemen in the City of Hammond, other than those fixed by statute or by ordinance, heretofore enacted and fixing the effective date thereof.
Madam Chairlady.
Yes, Councilman Warple.
Move for first and second reading with a Finance Committee hearing on October 2nd at 4:00 PM.
Second.
Motion by Councilman Warple, second by Councilman Higgs, for first and second reading of seventeen twenty-three with a Finance Committee meeting on Monday, October 2nd at 4:00 PM. Any dis- um, any discussion? Any discussion? Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Item D, ordinance seventeen dash twenty-four sponsored by Councilman Spitali. The 2018 Budget Proposal for the Hammond Redevelopment.
Madam President.
Yes, Councilman Spitali.
Move through first and second reading, refer to Finance Committee, the meeting set for October 2nd at 4:00.
Second.
Motion by Councilman Spitali, second by Councilman, um, Emerson, for first and second reading of seventeen twenty-four with a Finance Committee meeting on Monday, October 2nd at 4:00 PM. Any discussion? Any discussion? Any discussion?
Madam President, did you say seventeen twenty-four should be seventeen twenty-five, we're on the third one, right?
We're on redevelopment, correct?
Yeah, we're on twenty-four right now.
Twenty-four?
Seventeen twenty-four. Alright, any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Item M, ordinance seventeen dash twenty-five sponsored by Councilwoman Vanez, Councilman Markovitch and Spitali. The 2018 Budget Proposal, the Hammond Sanitary District Sewer Maintenance Fund Number 608, also known as 8201. Special Sanitary Debt Service Exempt Fund 308, also known as 8284. And the Special Sanitary Debt Service Fund 309, also known as 8280.
Madam President.
Councilman Spitali.
Move through first and second reading, refer to the Finance Committee, the meeting set for October 2nd at 4:00.
Second.
Motion by Councilman Spitali, second by Councilman Higgs, for first and second reading of seventeen twenty-five uh, with a Finance Committee meeting on Monday, October 2nd at 4:00 PM. Any discussion?
Madam President.
Councilman Higgs.
I'd like to be added as a sponsor of seventeen twenty-five, I so move.
Uh, thank you, Councilman Higgs. Uh, any, is there a second on that?
Second.
Uh, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Alrighty, so now, um... Uh, so motion by Councilman, uh, I forget where we were.
Higgs.
Uh, (laugh) Councilman Spitali for seventeen twenty-five, correct?
That's correct.
With the second by Councilman Higgs, uh, with the Finance Committee meeting on Monday, October 2nd. Uh, any discussion? Any discussion? Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Item F, ordinance seventeen dash twenty-six sponsored by Councilwoman Vanez. An ordinance authorizing the business manager to transfer funds from one line item to another within the Hammond Sanitary District Sewer Maintenance Budget.
Madam President.
Yes, Councilman Spitali.
Do through first and second reading, refer to the Finance Committee, the meeting set for October 2nd at 4:00.
Second.
Motion by Councilman Spitali, second by Councilman Emerson, for first and second reading of seventeen twenty-six with a Finance Committee meeting on Monday, October 2nd at 4:00 PM. Any discussion? Any discussion? Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Item G, ordinance seventeen dash twenty-seven sponsored by Councilman Warple. An ordinance amending ordinance, ordinances 9207, 8880, 8942, 8091, 9016, 9072, 9207, 9124 and 9305 creating a voluntary retirement program in 2017 for certain eligible employees of the City of Hammond.
Madam President.
Yes, Councilman Warple.
Move for first and second reading with a committee hearing of finance on October 2nd, 2017 at 4:00.
Thank you.
Second.
Motion by Councilman Warple, second by Councilman Raikos, uh, for first and second reading of seventeen twenty-seven with a Finance Committee meeting on Monday, October 2nd at 4:00. Any discussion?
Madam President.
Yes, Councilman Higgs.
If we could please have Heather step to the podium and just explain this particular ordinance and how they will affect those who are interested in retiring from the City of Hammond.
This by out ordinance, uh, basically mirrors the language, I believe, of the, the one that was offered previously. Um, we have several departments that have eligible employees. You have to meet the, the PERF rules, uh, of retirement in order to be eligible, which means that either you are sixty-five and have ten years of service, you are sixty and have fifteen years of service, or you are fifty-five or over, older and have combined age and years of service that equals eighty-five. So, those are the PERF standards, that's what we put in place here. If the council is to approve this, we are asking that the departments, they'll be notified of the employees who will be eligible. Employees will have to make a decision and notify our office by October 24th. Um, and the retirement, final retirement date will be, uh, December 29th of this year. We are asking for that, that kind of quick turnaround period because we contacted PERF and they're telling us they now need about ninety days in order, um, to process your retirement paperwork. So, when the employee submits their plan to PERF, uh, we're trying to minimize the amount of time that they have to go without a paycheck. So, that's why that date is coming up pretty quickly here. Um, if there are any questions, I can answer.
Thank you.
Thank you, Heather.
Okay, we have a motion on the floor, uh, by Councilman Warple, second by Councilman Raikos, for first and second reading of seventeen twenty-seven with a Finance Committee meeting on Monday, October 2nd at 4:00. Any discussion? Any discussion? Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Item H, ordinance seventeen dash twenty-eight sponsored by the Norma Home of Indian Land Trust Number 120367. Also the sponsor is Councilwoman Vanez. An ordinance reclassifying certain lands in the City of Hammond for zoning purposes and amending ordinance number 8514, which is an ordinance establishing a zoning plan for the City of Hammond including the regulations and maps to administer the zoning plan in order to provide for orderly growth and development within the city, all in accordance with the comprehensive land use plan as amended for property commonly known as 2620 165th Street in Hammond.
Madam President.
Yes, Councilman Higgs.
I move this ordinance by first and second reading by title and refer to council as a whole and building and zoning, seventeen twenty-eight, I so move.
Second.
Motion by Councilman Higgs, second by Councilman Spitali, for first and second reading of seventeen twenty-eight with a building and zoning and council as a whole committee and the date?
Uh...
Tuesday, October 10th?
The 10th.
Five fifteen P.
Five fifteen, but we also need to have...
An intent.
...intend to consider on this particular ordinance as well.
Thank you very much. Alrighty, so, uh, motion by Councilman Higgs, is there a second?
Second.
Did I, you seconded, I'm sorry, uh, second by Councilman Spitali, uh, for first and second reading of seventeen twenty-eight, uh, refer to building and zoning and council as a whole on Tuesday, October 10th, five fifteen PM, uh, with an intent to consider. Any discussion?
Madam President.
Councilman Higgs.
This is in my particular district where they're interested in rezoning this property for a furniture company. Um, hopefully it will be a benefit to the community and I look forward to seeing additional businesses coming to my district. So, I am extremely pleased to see a vacant building become commercial. So, uh, in saying that, thank you so much for having an interest in my district. And I also would like to be a sponsor of this particular ordinance.
Is there a second on that?
Second.
Motion by Councilman Higgs, second by Councilman Warple, uh, to, uh, for Councilman Higgs to be added as a sponsor. Any discussion? Any discussion? Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Alrighty, Councilman Higgs is added as a sponsor. So, we have before us, uh, motion by Councilman Higgs, second by Councilman Spitali, for first and second reading of seventeen twenty-eight referring to, uh, building and zoning and council as a whole on Tuesday, October 10th at five fifteen PM with an intent to consider. Any discussion? Any discussion? Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Item I, ordinance seventeen dash twenty-nine sponsored by the Hammond Port Authority and Councilman Kalwinski. An ordinance reclassifying certain lands in the City of Hammond for zoning purposes and amending ordinance number 8514, which is an ordinance establishing a zoning plan for the City of Hammond including the regulations and maps to administer the zoning plan in order to provide for orderly growth and development within the city, all in accordance with the comprehensive land use plan as amended for property commonly known as 2600 to, through 2606 New York Avenue and 1400 New York Street.
Madam President.
Yes, Councilman Kalwinski.
I move that seventeen dash twenty-nine passed through first and second reading. We refer to building and zoning on 10/10/17 with an intent to consider also on 10/10/17.
Motion by Councilman Kalwinski, second by Councilman Spitali, for first and second reading of seventeen twenty-nine, uh, refer to building and zoning on Tuesday, October 10th at five fifteen PM with an intent to consider. Any discussion?
Madam President.
Yes, Councilman Kalwinski.
I move to amend seventeen dash twenty-nine. In the title, on the last line of the title of the ordinance, the change from 1400 New York Street to 1400 126th Street.
Second.
Motion by Councilman Kalwinski, second by Councilman Spitali, to amend the address of 1400 New York Street to 1400 126th Street. Any discussion?
Madam President.
Yes, Councilman.
I don't believe that error is anywhere else in the document, but if it were, then 1400 New York Street would be changed to a 1400 126th Street in other areas as well.
Thank you. Any discussion? Any discussion? Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries to amend 1400 New York Street to 1400 126th Street. So, we have a motion before us for first and second reading of seventeen twenty-nine uh, with a committee meeting, building and zoning on Tuesday, October 10th at five fifteen with an intent to consider. Any discussion?
Madam President.
Yes, Councilman.
Motion to pass seventeen dash twenty-nine as amended.
Second.
Motion by Councilman Kalwinski, second by Councilman Spitali, uh, to amend seventeen twenty-nine and your, this is with regard to the address, correct?
Pass as amended, yes.
Okay. Uh, and, oh, okay, I see what you're saying. Uh, so, uh, we have the motion, first and second reading, uh, refer to building as zoning, uh, on Tuesday, October 10th, five fifteen PM with an intent to consider as amended. Alrighty, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Okay.
President Vanez, that concludes the introduction of ordinances.
Thank you very much, Clerk Golick. Well, it looks like we're going to be very busy on Monday, October 2nd, uh, with the, uh, Finance Committee meeting. Uh, I would like to point out in a previous meeting that we canceled the, uh, regularly scheduled city council meeting on Monday, October 9th, uh, because that is Columbus Day and we rescheduled that meeting for Tuesday, um, October 10th. Uh, we will have our regular caucus meeting at 5:30, uh, followed by the council meeting at 6:00 PM. Okay, so, uh, we have no resolutions, followed by new unfinished business?
Madam President.
Yes, Councilman Higgs.
I'd like to let us into the Indiana Department of Transportation as it relates to the highway near the bridge in Spone School and see if they can have that cleaned up as quickly as possible, as well as the railroad company that is responsible for dumping on Fayette, from Fayette all the way to So, I so move.
Motion by Councilman Higgs, is there a second?
Second.
To have a letter sent to Indot regarding the tall weeds, it's no longer Spone, we should identify that properly, correct?
Does, I guess, well, they would, First Baptist Church owns the property, but it was Spone School, but they know where the property is.
Okay. And, also, a letter to who regarding Fayette?
Fayette, I guess it would be the railroad company, and, um...
Okay.
I'm sure, um, they know who the, who's responsible for dumping, I mean, it's ridiculous. We gotta come up with some mechanism or some particular ordinances as it relates to those people that are caught dumping in these areas, and so that they can be cited, and the code enforcement can deal with these issues quickly and abruptly, because it's ridiculous. I've been looking at garbage bags and all kinds of debris sitting on Fayette, and it's near the police station. I'm sure the officers don't even enjoy seeing that every day going to work, and I know if I see it, they see it. So, something has to be done, and I'm begging for help in regards to getting this cleaned up, so.
Alrighty, so, Councilman Higgs made a motion to have a letter set to, sent to Indot and the railroad near Fayette. Is there a second?
I seconded it.
Uh, you did, okay, second by Councilman Rayco. Any discussion? Any discussion? Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Any other new and unfinished business?
Madam President.
Yes, Councilman Higgs.
I'd like a letter sent to Public Works in regards to the graffiti that's sitting on the fence on Bauer Street, and it's the corner of Calumet, there's a car dealership there, and there is a bunch of graffiti just sitting on the fence, I so move.
Motion by Councilman Higgs, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Councilman Warple, to have a letter sent to Public Works regarding the graffiti on Bauer and Calumet. Any discussion? Any discussion? Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Any other new and unfinished business? Any other new and unfinished business? Any other new and unfinished business? New and unfinished business is now closed. Public expression. Okay. The first speaker is Chuck Earhart. Please approach the podium, sir, your name and address, and you will have three minutes. Thank you.
My name is Chuck Earhart, Thirty-six Brunswick Hand, Brunswick Street, Hammond. I represent the residents and our supporters of the areas affected by the proposed eminent domain properties for the West Lake Corridor. If you would all kindly stand. We would like to request that referendum be proposed and passed stating that the Northern Indiana Commuter Transportation District may not take our homes or any partial acquisitions unless the federal funding is in place for the West Lake Corridor project. Please resume your seats. Since my home is an obstruction to the Gateway Station and the track realignment, let me address this area from my perspective. Over the years, we have been unofficially called a slum. I don't get it. I've been lost in slums in Chicago and afraid for my life. There's nothing like that. My homes, and the homes here on Brunswick and Hannover are well-kept, constantly improving, lawns and gardens tended, the streets clean, and the neighborhood quiet and safe. Many of the homes were built between eighteen eighty and the First World War by the workers who helped make Hammond what it is today. If any of us were one hundred to one hundred and forty years old, we might all need a facelift. The slumlord is Nick D. Their current properties are only mowed twice each year, maybe three times. They are strewn with blown-in trash, automotive litter, and sometimes illegal dumping. Nick D does nothing about it. They do not return phone calls nor answer letters. We clean up the trash, and have large items such as piles of construction debris, furniture, car parts, tires, and other things hauled away by city services. Picture this, the newly finished streetscape, and introduction to Hammond via Goslin and Sheffield, landscape of trees, flowers, a traffic circle with their sculpture, as Structure Point called it, an attractive entrance to Hammond. Then, passing motorists and passengers look out their windows and see a vast expanse of vacant, unkept land, choked with weeds, trash, rotting sofas and mattresses, construction debris containing lead and asbestos, and the remaining junkyards that Nick D no longer wants to purchase, probably because they don't want to do the environmental cleanup after all the recent soil testing. These horribly maintained Nick D properties would no doubt frighten away any possibility of new residents and businesses that enter the city via Goslin and Sheffield. This scenario could possibly be perpetual as the federal funding dries up. A new commuter train is now a low, low priority for Congress. They will pay out enormous sums of federal dollars for the restorations of the states of Texas and Florida, the commonwealth of Puerto Rico and the Virgin Islands, and foreignate to Mexico after all the recent natural disasters. So please, do the right thing. Propose and pass a resolution that Nick D may not take any homes or any partial acquisitions until and not before the federal funding firmly in place. We all thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Earhart.
Very well said.
The next speaker is Donna Dunn.
Hello, my name is Donna Dunn. I live at Twenty-eight Thirty-seven, One Hundred Seventy-first Street in beautiful Hessville. And I'd like to give some clarification on where we are with this, with this South Shore project right now. Right now, the South Shore submitted their bid for FTA evaluation and rating. If they get a thumbs-up rating, that means they start the engineering phase. Once they complete the engineering phase, then they have to go back next year, about this time next year, back to the FTA, do it all over again, before they ever get dime one from the federal government. So a thumbs-up right now does not guarantee federal funding. The project rating, again, like I said, we have to do it again in Two Thousand Nine. The millions of dollars of assessed value of this property could be taken off the tax rolls. We have a referendum before us as a city for a new school, and now the South Shore, Nick D, wants to take property off of our tax rolls for a train that we may never get. So let me, let me run this scenario past you. The Nick D gets their first thumbs-up from the, from the FTA. They start acquiring properties at the beginning of next year. Next fall comes, they do not get their rate, their second thumbs-up from the, from the FTA. Now all these properties that they've acquired, these homes that they've demolished, will sit empty and vacant. They may tear them down, they may not. They may become slums, as, as was referred to earlier. So all these properties will then be taken off of our tax rolls, and Hammond, we can't afford that. Not only can we not afford that, we can't let these people's homes be taking for a train on a project that may or may not get approved. And also, the person in charge of Nick D's real estate acquisition is the same person who, who acquired property for the City of Chicago's failed Olympics bid. Most of that property is still empty. So, and also, I would invite you to take a drive down to Peatone. All of that property that was taken for the Peatone Airport, I'm sure we're all familiar with that, most of that property still sits empty. All of that property, although it's in Illinois, is still off the tax rolls. Please don't let a bad idea take more property off our tax rolls. Don't let a bad idea push people out of their homes that they've had for, for, most of them, for generations. Let's keep Hammond, Hammond, and let's keep our homes. Thank you.
Next speaker is George Stoya. Alrighty. Public expression is now closed.
Madam, Madam President.
Yes, Councilman.
I make a motion that we go back to the regular order of business, I so move.
Motion by Councilman Higgs, is there a second?
Second.
Uh, second by Councilman Torres to return to the regular order of business. Any discussion on that? Clerk Golick, roll call votes, please.
Markovich.
Yes.
Spitali, yes. Kalwinski. Torres.
Yes.
Higgs.
Yes.
Emerson.
Yes.
Warple.
Yes.
Rayco.
Yes.
Vinesz.
Yes. Motion carries. Eight in favor, one absent.
Madam President.
Yes, Councilman Higgs.
I just wanted to let those individuals that are in the audience, and if you could stand up again, please, those in regards to your property being taken. I amend, I commend you in your efforts of speaking up for an issue that is very important. I, I am so elated and so excited just to know that you're in the audience and you're concerned about your property. You can sit down. Secondly, I would like to say, as a councilman, it's not in my particular district, but I sympathize with you and I understand. If I can do anything in, in your efforts of keeping your property, feel free to reach out to me. It's important, and your points were well-taken. God bless you all, and thank you for coming.
Madam Chairman.
Yes, Councilman Torres.
That happens to be the second district, which you all know, and it is my understanding that they are not gonna make the decision until February. They're going through, seems like, all the action now of, uh, of getting, preparing to acquire property. But, uh, at least I've been told that because of, um, the White House, they don't know which way they're gonna go, even though a lot of people feel positive that it is, it's gonna happen with our help, with the city's help, or with the federal government's help, or Nick D, for some reason, has the power and control to do it even without us. So I've been waiting from them to hear, so that I could relay that information to you. I talked to a few people there in that area, not many, and because I don't know what direction it's gonna go yet, that's why I haven't shared anything that I, well, I have nothing to share, other than it's gonna be in February before they make the final decision of any property that they're gonna acquire for that area. We all know what the area is, but, uh, I'm, I'm sure that with the public hearings, and we had one at Irving back in April, I believe that was relayed there also. So, as a councilman, that's all I have to say. I've been trying to keep up with it, and I'm just as informed as you are, going back and forth at what appears in, in the Northwest Times every now and then, and that's all I can tell you. But, if it does go through, the only thing I can tell you is that, hopefully, you get fair value for your property, and, and that's the issue that I'm gonna deal with.
Madam President.
But I'll be happy to discuss, I mean, to, to go with you to whatever route it is. I know what the feeling is among that, with the residents in that area, and if I live in that area, I'd be feeling, feeling the same way. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilman Torres. I would like to point out that we, as a council, have no control over what Nick D does. Nick D is completely separate from us. They are the one who is driving the train, so to speak, on this. So, we have no say-so about what action they take. Uh, Councilman Higgs?
Madam President, uh, thank you. Dean, if you could please step up, maybe you can give us an idea. He's our city engineer, and maybe he can address some of the concerns. I know there was an issue with contamination in the soil being tested in that area at one point, so...
I'm not aware of any testing of contaminated soil. I would point out that this council has already approved a, a resolution that set forth a requirements for funding for the project. So, those requirements included Gateway Station, a maintenance facility, and the stipulation that no money be transferred or included as part of a previous taxation, so there's no increase in taxes, until the federal funding is made available. And the expectation is that federal funding, it could be in the president's budget as early as February, so no homes would be acquired until that point. Contrary to what the woman said earlier, um, uh, engineering has been ongoing for many months, many, actually, two years now. So engineering is ongoing, it, and, and in fact, uh, homes will not start to be acquired until, until federal funding is in place, and there is no second action that has to be done by the federal government. Once federal funding's approved, then you move forward. As for environmental testing, sir, I'm not aware of any. I know that the engineer's been out taking soil borings, but those are mostly for structural design of the, of the overhead, uh, structures that are going through the city.
Thank you, Dean.
Thank you. Any other new and unfinished business?
Madam President.
Yes, Councilman.
I make a motion that we, uh...
Return.
...return to the regular order of business.
Thank you.
Second.
Motion by Councilman Higgs, second by Councilman Rayco, to return to the reg, regular order of business. Any discussion? Any discussion? Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Madam President, I make a motion that we adjourn from this meeting, I so move.
Motion by Councilman Higgs, second by Councilman Spitali, to adjourn this meeting. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Everyone have...